And in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2002-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the New Kent County School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the New Kent County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the New Kent County School Board. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the certification of the closed session?
Make a motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed, goes with the here. Thank you very much. We will stand to the legislative.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board member comments? We're going to start that one there from the secretary.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. I just wanted to take a minute to briefly thank the New Kent Educational Foundation, the executive director, Mr. Ross Miller, and Brian Nichols for your help. They launched the virtual 5K Strides for Schools that began on April 18th and finished up today. So over that time period, they don't have all of their numbers in yet, but they're looking at roughly 60 participants that partake in that event. It's always difficult to fundraise at this point in time, but definitely appreciate their efforts. And Mr. Miller and Mr. Nichols, thank you for all that you did to promote that activity the last month as well. Appreciate it.
I just want to say a special thank you to all of the teachers at all the schools that have been working extraordinarily hard at setting up these individual meetings with their students on a regular basis and walking them through the process. I just speak from personal experience with our granddaughter at Watkins, and it's just been a great reminder of how dedicated so many teachers are at communicating with their students. And it's a reassurance, it should be a reassurance for our community that our teachers are key for the students. And so I'm very proud of the teachers that represent New Kent County. We want to thank them for all their hard work in moving forward, communicating in a positive way through Zoom and through group communication as well also. So just thank the teachers for all that you are doing and working through these challenging times. And hopefully we will get back together sooner than later so you can be with your students.
Thank you. We do have two board members who are joining us electronically, Ms. Stasko, Ms. Barber. Any comments you would like to make this evening?
Not really. I will say that there was a pretty cool initiative that was started on Facebook to adopt a senior. I know many board members were involved in that, as well as Mr. Nichols. I thought it was a great way for the community to come together and support the seniors this year in such an untraditional time. And I'm really thankful to the parents and the community for making that happen.
Barber, any comments?
I'll just note in general, I think everybody has made outstanding strides to keep the community together and New Kent strong. So definitely looking forward to people being able to join together in person, but until then, we continue to show our strength.
Great, thank you. Mr. Nichols?
I just want to echo those comments. I'm incredibly proud of the community for coming together and our staff that continue to invent things. A lot of them, I hope even when we come back together, we still keep intact. George Watkins launched, they were book peddlers and jump up bikes and with the day permits and passed out books. Our library media specialists have started a revolution and you can get your book or reserve your book online and go drive through, pick it up. Tour child nutrition workers who will recognize, senior yard signs. People just keep finding the ways to rally and support the community. So just proud to be superintendent of a place as amazing as New Kent. Thank you.
Very much. We're going to move into recognitions. We have quite a few recognitions tonight. The first is going to be Teacher of the Year. Do you want to?
Absolutely. So we want to recognize our teachers of the year tonight, and we also have a, we will unveil the district-wide, division-wide Teacher of the Year live tonight on Zoom. So, Ms. Silver, presentation forward?
Yeah, just thank the committee members briefly just for a moment, and our teachers for participating on the interviews last week. They participated virtually. But I did want to thank Mr. Nichols and Dr. Harding for participating, as well as Ron Steers as a board supervisor's member, Angela Griffith as a parent and a New Kent Education Foundation member, Alan Miles, also from the New Kent Education Foundation, Ross Miller, and for all of his hard work with this video. And Jessica Dixon sat in, our team alone with myself, as her first time interviewing teachers. And she had just a fall listening to everything, and she was so excited when she finished. But we have four phenomenal individuals, Joe Cront at the high school, Rachel Fish at New Kent Middle School, Stephanie Sutton at George Watkins Elementary, and Carmen Jenks at New Kent Elementary School. Made it very hard for the board to decide. Would it help to turn the lights down?
Yeah. That's blue.
While we're waiting, it was the most difficult. It was what a wonderful group. Wonderful things they said about teaching it again, how important it was to them. We're very fortunate to have the teachers that we have. They love working here. It was amazing.
There can be passive. Division level Teacher of the Year, Stephanie Sutton. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Stephanie.
So Stephanie, if you're watching, congratulations. Stephanie is also a recent graduate from Hope Division with her educational status, really in administration. So lots to celebrate. Four fantastic nominees and probably one of the most difficult decisions I've been a part of.
Okay. Continuing with the recognition that we have this evening, we have recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week.
So last week, May 4th through 8th, was Teacher Appreciation Week. One of the many things we've had to rethink due to the closure, what we decided to do as a school division had a lot of fun with is we did a drive-through appreciation where teachers drove through the loop and had New Kent gift packs. With one of the hardest-to-get items in the closure was included in that pack. Keep that a secret unless you came through the loop. Just can't say enough about our teachers and how amazing they are, and all our staff and how they come together. So while we couldn't be together in person, we do appreciate everything that you are doing, and we'll continue to celebrate you well past May 4th through 8th.
Great, thank you very much. Next is recognition of School Nutrition Employee Week.
And we appreciate our school nutrition employees every week and every year, but this year, they have been absolutely incredible. I am on state-level phone calls where people talk about division employees and how do you get people to do this, and how do you get people to do that? And that's just not the case in New Kent, especially with our school nutrition employees. It was School Lunch Hero Week, or School Lunch Hero Day, and our school nutrition employees are truly heroes. They're feeding between 300 and 400 students during grab and go each week, seven days' worth of meals. So you can't do that all in one day. So they are working there behind the scenes each day, making sure that our families and our communities are fed. So thank you to our school nutrition employees and Leslie Smith who supervises them, does a tremendous job as well.
Thank you. Next is recognition of School Nurse Day. Dr. Pollak, come on up, please. Arms length and come on up. You want to move down, Brian?
I just didn't know whether to sit down.
Oh, no. Six points.
Chairman members of the board, Mr. Nichols. So we have four nurses in New Kent, and we are one of a few school divisions with a registered nurse at each one of our buildings. And I can't tell you how much work they do each and every day. And I think they actually miss being in the clinics because some of them came through the drive-by.
They do.
Drive-through, teacher appreciation. That's Friday, and they were so happy and couldn't wait to get back to school. We do, as you know, we do have a nurse that's retiring at the end of the school year, Ms. Walsh. I miss her already. And we have replaced her with someone that we're very excited about. And they've already started planning and talking about training units and things like that for about next few years. So shout out to our school nurses.
Okay. You can stay right there because we're going to talk about children's mental health awareness.
Thanks, ma'am. And I wanted to also say that one of our school nurses is getting up one of the committees that Mr. Nichols mentioned earlier, looking at health and safety and things. Mental Health Day is always, mental health for children and adolescents is something that's always kind of close to my heart. We've seen a lot of articles and concerns across the country for what impact the pandemic is going to have on the mental health of children, those who are going through trauma and different types of anxiety and things like that. And so we wanted to draw some awareness to mental health. We also have a working group committee that's going to be looking at facets of mental health as we start looking at how to reopen. And so we're just excited that we have a lot of diverse working groups to return to learn, I believe is what Mr. Nichols just called it. Just put some resources down there for you guys if you want to take over the notes.
Thank you very much. Board members, you've had the opportunity to look at the minutes, bills and payroll, monthly financials, and the superintendent's recommendations regarding personnel matters. Are there any questions?
None from me. No questions.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I know opposed. Motion carries. We have citizen comment period on the manning. Do we have? With no comments from the public, we move into new business. And the first item on the agenda is the roof replacement phase two for GW1.
Paul, can you talk us through the roof replacement? Earlier this year, Tim came before you and talked about breaking the GW roof replacement into phases. So phase one was completed earlier this year because Tim is amazing at what he does and always comes in under budget. We have enough money in our budget to do phase two. So roof savings and the work that Tim does. What Tim has before you, which you have loaded, is the roof replacement for phase two. Tim could talk to you about where that is on the roof. Any questions you have, warranties associated with the roof and so forth. So it's really a continuation of the work, but because of the trouble we wanted to bring anything for you today.
This is actually phase two and three of the, this is replacing, restoration of the roof system on the flat that is there. This area that we will be doing, this one will be over top of the main office, the library, and coming into the foyer there. The other part that is a small old flat piece that's over there, over top of the kitchen on the back side. And that will be, that will be three out of the four that we have up there that are flat roofs that will be done after this. And I think we will have the left as the main gym itself. And with this, you'll get a 20-year warranty. This is for restoration, so we will be getting a 20-year warranty on this one as it's completed the piece. We just had with Rick, we have 20-year warranty on it. So, any questions on that?
Board members, any questions?
Is that a project that's going to happen this summer?
This will start. I'm hoping they're doing it next couple of months.
Okay, based on board approval tonight.
So it's scheduled to be done before school, potentially, et cetera.
Well, you get so much done and so little. We just really appreciate your being able to move forward on this earlier and sooner in terms of the money than we thought. So.
Tim and this team have been doing a foregone number of projects. So we get to be in new business. That is part of Tim and his work as well, and wanting to do more projects and make sure we're ready.
And that is an action item for the next year.
Both A and B will be action items for you later on too.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Appreciate it. Next item on this morning, we have CIP transfer request.
Yes, ma'am. Chair, board members, and Mr. Pollak can kind of tag along with this as well. So we basically sat and reviewed all of his current CIP projects and talked about different projects that he could do now with the schools being closed. He has the time, he has the empty school, so it's just a really opportune time for him to do these types of projects. So we really looked at what he would like to try to tackle. And you'll see three things on this list, two of which we're pulling from our prior appropriations. One is replace all of the blinds at George Watkins Elementary School. We had spoken about doing some different upgrades and things at George Watkins as we're preparing for, you know, renovations that we can, if you walk in, it's something that we know will make a big difference in that school. We're also skipping down to looking at updating the front office flooring, and that would be pulling the carpet up and replacing that with tile. So that is a $6,000 request. The last request is just shifting some funds around at New Kent Elementary School, a project that Tim had worked on. Now just looking at replacing thermostats.
Yeah, we're looking at, and we've already done the rainbow section. We're bringing out, taking away the old mercury thermostats that were in different sections and now doing red house, yellow house, and blue house. So the older areas would be at least controllable a little better and safer.
Are they automatically, I mean, are they?
They're going to be what you have right behind you there on the wall there. That what we'll be doing too is an automatic set thermostat versus a old mercury.
Just turn the dots.
Yeah, yeah.
And with regard to the blind replacement, is that going to be for all the windows?
That's everything. That's all the way through. And it's the same thing we used at the high school. Out of that, when we did the high school up there, we've had one replacement on them since '08. And we've done them at the middle school now, and that's what I recommend for the elementary.
And it makes a huge difference. So it's a huge difference. Trying to find things that you'll be able to see when you walk in and notice and things that we can tackle and wouldn't be able to tackle if we weren't closer.
And they're not really blind when we change them. They're rolled in shades to the technical, they're rolled in shades.
So you're contracting this out or you're doing this in?
How is that, how would it be contracted out?
Other board member questions?
As we get closer to the end of the year, you'll see additional projects coming through as we roll through and what the next needs are.
I think it's great that we're maximizing, again, that empty school is getting all the things done that you have to usually wait for this too many times. So thank you again. Okay? If there are no other questions, then we will move on to the budget update.
Well, just wanted to stay with me on this one. So we started the budget process in 2019, some point, and we've gone through various iterations. COVID-19 and the closures state nationally have impacted our budget. We talked to you last time about some of those impacts. We know a little bit more about that. So the sheet you have in front of you has what the original budget was for FY20, our original recommended for FY21, what that change would be, and then the reductions. So we were working on a number from the state of around $200,000. We now have the official number of the reduction is $206,149 is our reduction. And the county will be flat funded from last year. We initially asked for $925,000. You can see the note that the March 13th Board of Supervisors meeting, we allocated $500,000, and we worked our budget on that piece. To the April 17th Board of Supervisors meeting, we reduced to flat funding. We also came before you last week, you talked about some, last week, two weeks ago, talked about some possible reductions to balance the budget. We needed to cut a little over $1.1 million in order to have our budget equal. So, hey, do you want to talk about some of those final reductions in order to balance the budget?
Sure. Obviously, because our elementary school is postponed out, we will not need those planning positions in FY21. So those are on the list. Salary increase and pay scale adjustments, any additional funds that were coming through, the governor's final amendment that we are hoping to put towards salary increases. Obviously, those increases aren't coming. Those initiatives were unallowed in the governor's budget, so we will not be providing those salary increases at this time. You all saw at our last board meeting our healthcare renewal presentation, which provided some of the best news that we've received in a while. So we were looking at that reduction. We have some support positions, some contract length changes that we were going to do that we will postpone those, some support positions that we will hold and not fill. We also have a high school counselor position that we had wanted for the high school that we will not put in the budget at this time. And also an elementary school counselor position. And there is one additional elementary school teacher position that we had had in line with the elementary schools. So we're going to be that as well.
Just to clarify and just to be clear, these are positions we were intending to add because of changes in SOQ and additional funding. So these are positions we have currently and people aren't in those positions. Objective is to protect the positions we have and really limit new positions due to budget constraints.
So we're not cutting any existing positions at the school level or administrative level, correct?
That's correct right now. We'll say that we have recommended, or we've made the recommendation that we very carefully review any vacant positions that come up, just because the unlands with the sales tax revenues and things of that nature. So anywhere that we may have a little room to do something different or look at what we could do with a vacancy, we are reviewing those. But no individuals, you know, positions are being reduced at this time.
Any vacancy we have is an opportunity to rethink what we do. So we're going through a process without any vacancy we have currently before we put it out to post for a new report.
Related to that, I think this was, I think we may have talked about this at the work session, it would be really helpful for board members to have a copy of what our hurt ratios are so that we know where we stand right now. One of the things we do here from teachers is how large the classes are. And it has always been one of the things that's probably been one of the most appealing things about New Kent. In addition to being a small community, we really recognize that low class sizes really matter. So if we could just have that information on hand on where we are now, kind of a snapshot of what do we have now, and then in terms of looking at growth, what, how's it going to change if we're not able to add any positions? And even more important, if we have people leaving and we're thinking about positions that we may not fill, one of the first things we might want to be asking is what are the implications of that from a class size standpoint?
And that was, to your point, Dr. Harding, one of the additional considerations that you'll see under the reductions was a request in between our last meeting and this meeting back to the county was for two additional elementary school teachers, related to combat remediation and fill gaps for kids who've been out for five to six months, but also for that class size ratio. So that request was denied, but that is something that we continue to push for, continue to look at.
Okay, thank you very much. Board members, questions about the budget?
I think the only question I have about the budget and move forward to your point, Dr. Harding, is depending on, and I know this is speculation at this point, but because we don't know the impact of what's going to happen in September and how our scheduling may be affected by this, which could definitely affect class size. We could be mandated by the state that for our short period of lockdown says, your classroom size is now going to only be 15 students versus. And how is that going to impact our student teacher ratios in the amount of teachers that we may need to help that or pair of professionals to help supplement if we are, because I know that that's a potential option on the table depending on how things occur. And I think we have to really consider a contingency plan as we talked about, how that could affect us budget-wise going into September because we could, our hand could be forced to a degree to have to be creative. Now we do that.
And also along those same lines, transportation. So. So looking at different schedules and different things like that, you could have a transportation bill that would double. So we have to, we have five committees or six committees that will be working on those, the scheduling is a big part of that, class size scheduling and how we move kids throughout the county and through our schools. So we'll bring more information back to the board and the public in June on that. But you're right, class size ratios, transportation costs, and all those things associated with it. A lot of unknowns at this point. What you have on your sheet right now is what we know as of today. And this does come before you, before approval this evening. The county is set to adopt their budget on March 27th. So we, May 27th?
May.
May 27th. On May 27th, which means we will come back at June 1st, our next schedule meeting together to adopt the budget. So that's sort of the timeframe that we're in right now.
Other questions? Folks who are here? Andrea, Sarah, any questions? I have them mics muted. We will now move into action items. And board members, do I hear a motion to approve the SSC contract extension as presented?
I move that we approve the SSC contract extension as presented.
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and no opposed, motion carries. The next item, do I hear a motion to approve the George Watkins Elementary School roof replacement phase two as presented?
Make a motion, we approve the George Watkins roof replacement as presented by Tim Pollak, phase two.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the CIP transfer request as presented?
I move that we approve the CIP transfer request as presented.
Can you, I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed, motion carries. The last item, do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommended FY20, 21 budget as presented?
Make a motion that we approve the superintendent's recommended budget as presented for FY21.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second.
All in favor? No opposed, motion carries. The last item on the agenda are upcoming meetings.
I would like to remind the public and the board that we are kicking off Public Information Session for redistricting. It is tomorrow at 4 o'clock. There's a Zoom link, we have it on our Facebook page, we have it on our website. We handed out flyers today, it's on each elementary school website as well, so lots of ways you can find it. There is also a dial-in number, so if you want to listen in or you're having internet issues at the time, we have multiple ways that you can do it. If you can't join us at 4 o'clock tomorrow, the session tomorrow will focus on the process. So you'll hear the timeline, you'll hear how we're going to go about the redistricting process. Later in the summer, we'll bring maps to you to kind of look at and react to and provide feedback. So tomorrow's really about the process, which the board has heard at a couple of school board meetings. So join us at 4 o'clock. If you can't join us at 4 o'clock, that's okay. It'll be on demand. You'll be able to view it at any time and be able to ask questions as well. So I will moderate tomorrow's session. So if you have questions, you can put it in the chat box. Matthew Propper from Propper GIS will be facilitating the conversation. We'll post the presentation, and we look forward to really kicking off this process. One of the questions that I received was about doing the redistricting with the new school being delayed. So even though the new school is delayed, we still need to go through the redistricting process. In a sense, it actually helps us a little bit because now we get families even more noticed of a possible zone change. So we don't know that these will go into effect for FY21. It may be the 22 school year, but it'll be in conjunction with the new school being built or finalized. So got that question, so I wanted to state that publicly as well. I'll open tomorrow's session doing the same thing. So that's tomorrow meeting.
Great, thank you very much.
Just as a quick update, Brian, I guess for the public and for everyone, is that, do you have any updated information of the OMD, new elementary school? Where we are in that process, just to kind of give a quick update, where we are with that?
The update process, as I have it right now, is the county is looking at the fall pool for funding, and we're exploring other ways that could we begin the project sooner. So I don't have a firm update, but we're talking through various scenarios, both mostly architects on our side and also on the county's side as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With no other items, the school board meeting is adjourned.